Sable War Memorial High School Student Activity Account, SEA Member Suspension. Under Negotiations, SEA Grievances Hearing, Level 3, A Number of Grievances. Sable Principals Association Contract, Sable Education Association Contract, Holiday Six Schedule for Calendar Change, Student Discipline, High School Student, and HIB reports.
Thank you. Dr. Uppon, we have a presentation seated.
Mr. Howard, you're on.
Um, before I start, does everybody have a copy of the presentation?
Yes.
Uh, yes, sure. And I also have a few copies if anybody's interested.
Mr. Howard, do you want to use the microphone?
Sure.
Would the board member like the light shut down so you can see it?
Everybody can see that with the lights on? Yeah.
I'm gonna try my best to complete this with my PowerPoint being all the way across, but we'll see. Maybe I should have brought my own device. All right. Well, first off, I just want to thank the administrative staff and the schoolwork for having, giving me the opportunity to present our BYOD or Bring Your Own Device program that we have started to institute into the high school. My name is Chris Howard. I'm a high school history teacher. I teach both the AP history and also the survey level courses at the high school. I'm just gonna kind of run through it. All right, now, BYOD is a program that allows students to utilize their own personal technology within the classroom to access district-provided technology. Basically, what we tried to do in our classroom environments was have the students bring in their own personal devices from home. So their laptops, their tablets, their cellphones, any device that could connect to our infrastructure and our databases here at the school to facilitate a deeper learning experience within the classroom. And again, we incorporated the usage of these devices both throughout the lessons and class activities. Ever since I was asked to be a pilot teacher in this program, I've tried to immerse myself as much as I can in anything and everything that was BYOD. I was able to take workshops with my supervisor, Mr. Thomas D'Attille. I was able to contact other schools. I actually have a contact, an old wrestling coach buddy in Monroe School District, and they are also incorporating the BYOD into their lessons and their schools. And I tried to give as much information as possible, tried to make this as brief but as informative as possible. So because of this, I kind of came up with my own BYOD philosophy. What I found is that it wasn't just strictly content-based learning. The children in my class weren't just learning history, they were learning technology, literacy, English, tech literacy, problem solving. Everything was increased by using these devices that they brought in. We weren't able to have every student have a device, but when we were able to, we would have the students share devices, and it really worked out well. That was basically the first point I had about there. Also, it allows the instructor to pose a problem, which then allows students to search and work towards a solution using the role of technology that they will use later on in their life and careers. What I really love about this program is that we're setting them up for something they're gonna see later on in college or in their careers if they would like to go into the tech field or any field that's gonna use technology. The program allows the teacher to promote the creation of new media to complete assessments. Differing assessments, especially for different types of learners. We have visual, audio, and tactile type learners. Having something in your hands that was interactive allows students that wouldn't necessarily perform very well in standardized testing do fairly well with the new type of testing that I was able to bring into the classroom. The program can be completely student-centered if integrated properly, or the lesson plan provides. So again, all positives so far. Now, the infrastructure that we used to provide this BYOD program for the school, it's listed over there. We have district databases, school-wide wireless internet, which was absolutely amazing. It was just kind of localized to where I was, and then all of a sudden we moved it, and it made things so much easier and so much better. The children were actually able to talk to their other teachers and ask them to use the devices in their classrooms as well. And it really allowed them to kind of get a taste of what it could be if the whole school was doing the BYOD device. We had restricted wireless capabilities, kind of with access to the internet, what we could get on the internet. I'll kind of talk about that in a second. Hands-on IT support, I told them I shared them out in this presentation. Our IT staff was absolutely amazing, from Sandy Paul all the way down. Whenever I'd issue an email, it would go out, and within minutes to an hour, I'd have actually somebody there in my room helping me out. Sometimes we'd miss the class period, but at least for the next day, it would be resolved, and I wouldn't be able to or wouldn't have the same problems the next day. So I did say that they were unbelievable in helping me kind of bring this program into the classroom. Limited district provided equipment, I'm lucky enough to have a few computers in my classroom. We were actually able to use a few laptops as well to kind of fill in the spots for kids that didn't have a device. Internet security, which was good, our students were able to access certain things on the internet and stay away from the horrible dark four corners of the internet. So that was good. And then, of course, instituting it with the pilot program. I was one of two original teachers. Another teacher in my department was able to incorporate BYOD into his lessons. I know now through conversations that we've expanded it to a few more teachers at the high school. So again, I think it's a great program as of right now. Our design, using their personal devices, students will log in and utilize the district-provided resources. Teachers will incorporate BYOD into their lessons to allow full utilization of the program. 100% completion of the program would entail that every student, teacher, and classroom would be equipped to participate in BYOD. I know this is a step-by-step process, so I know my classroom, my region of the building, my department, very well set up for BYOD, and I know that it's gonna take a step-by-step process to get everybody up to, you know, 100% completion. So I know it'll take time, but as of right now, it's going at a pretty good steady pace. Again, and then bottom point, BYOD isn't something that you can just kind of pick up. You do have to do a little bit of homework yourself. You have to participate as much as possible. You can't just do it one day a week. For it to be successful, it needs to be done, and it needs to be discussed and pretty much built up upon any possible opportunity you can. So training, equipment, support, workshops, lesson planning, assessment would be provided as well either by the district or by the teachers themselves. Again, we're just talking about the design, and again, I'm just getting into specifically what I was doing with four ISM classes were initially selected, two of which were my AP US1 classes. We integrated the program during the last semester of the 2011-2012 school year. Approximately 45, I had 45 students at the time. Approximately only half of those students actively participated in BYOD for the rest of the year. Okay. Now, again, BYOD I'm using is a tool, a toolbox full of things. It wasn't just BYOD that I incorporated, it was everything I was doing with my class. I pretty much put out there electronically for the students to use. So classroom resources, I was able to use quite a few websites. Edmodo, I'm not sure if everybody's familiar with that, I'll stay out there if you guys would like to discuss that. Turnit.com, which is now that I believe the nation's leading plagiarism, anti-plagiarism website where the students, I'm sorry, submit their papers to be checked. TeacherWeb, which is something we actually did since my first year, six years ago. So again, I put everything out there, so students were able to have these resources at all times. And then, when they came into school, again, be able to kind of get on there and get whatever resources they needed. Again, throughout the classroom and through the class period, I would, you know, students would be asked throughout the course of the class period to research questions, information, or activities, definitions, primary resource documents, searches, current events. Again, I had them pair up if they did not have a device, so again, it worked pretty well. But, you know, not everybody having a device was one of the issues that I ran into. All right. Other things, I use Webquests. Webquest.com is a great, or webquest.org, excuse me, a great website for any teachers in the room that would like to try to incorporate that. Individual products, you know, I was able to use the BYOD program to successfully have the students complete these group projects, which I wish I could bring in, but they were too big, too large. The students did 45-minute video presentations. Unbelievable. We broke it up over two periods, and BYOD was an integral part to having them complete that. And then assessments, I put two stars there because I know down the road, state assessments are gonna have to be electronic. So this is something that I hope we don't have a gun to our heads and have to do this quickly, and we can take our time. But again, this is something that BYOD can really help out with. If students are familiar with the device they're using, they're not gonna get flustered when it's test day. And I was able to use websites like KIAP, which is a quiz website where students can go on before a test review, take a test or a quiz and things like that. I tried to keep that light. And running assignments, like I said, that could be submitted. I use BYOD in individual settings and group settings. And again, I don't know if I will read it, everything there. But again, tried to cater it to every student, tried to cater it to multiple settings, so it just wasn't the same thing day in and day out. So the results, you know, what was kind of terrible over the last three weeks, of course, we lost so much time. I was trying to get a survey out to all the children that I was able to incorporate into the program. Because of the events of the last three weeks, I wasn't able to get any of it locked down. And so I'm still in the process of doing that, and we'll submit that to the board as soon as I get it. From what I can see, grades improved. Recent students found that they had more time to understand the material because they were manipulating the information in ways that they were familiar with. I'm sure if anybody has children at home, they're tech savvy. So the pen and paper, while still being used in the classroom is great, but when children actually have the ability to manipulate the information in ways they find more appealing, I saw grades shoot up. Class projects, like I said, went above and beyond, technology literacy has improved. Students teaching students, that's kind of like a little personal one for the teachers when you don't have to be in every group where you have one student showing another student what they're doing and things like that, so that was great to see. Like I said, a student survey couldn't be a given opportunity of events the last few weeks. The big thing that really I developed in the last two weeks was not only does it help the students, but it changes pedagogy in the classroom for the instructor, for the teacher. Leads to a change in pedagogy. It will allow teachers to better instruct their students in an ever-changing, technologically advancing environment. From teacher-to-student-based lessons is something that everybody likes to hear. So possibilities, I love this program. I think it's endless. I think if we do go about it the right way, slowly, methodically, and build up on it, not just try to jump steps, I think it can absolutely change the education environment here in Sable. Electronic textbooks, I know that's big in college, something that, you know, we should probably get the students ready for. Creating of applications by students, everybody now, you know, with their iPods, their iPads. The app market is huge, and we can kind of incorporate just having children build apps that will help them with their studies. Fully interactive lessons, shareable resources, state assessment capabilities. Fully prepare for students for careers that will most likely include some use of technology. Something that I also developed while I was going through this, it's not a trend, it's not a fad. BYOD and students having electronic devices in class is not something that's just gonna fade away. Technology's just getting bigger, stronger, faster, better. And if we don't embrace it, we're just gonna fall to the wayside. So I think BYOD is a great program to kind of get us introduced to it. And that's pretty much it for the PowerPoint. My email's there. Anybody free enough to email me, I just like to open up if there's any major questions or suggestions.
Sal, first of all, I'm going to pull you through a volunteer question.
Thanks.
This has been a big issue of interest for the curriculum community. Because I think we all envisioned a couple of years down the road, the backpack for a textbook is replaced by an iPad. I mean, there are companies right now that have notified districts that they're not gonna publish textbooks anymore. It's gonna be all ebooks, so that drives it. The question after you is, how much prep time more do you see teachers having to use to prepare for electronic lessons versus what you would traditionally do?
In my experience, it kind of depends on how tech savvy the teacher is. Since I already had everything pretty much electronically made, it did take, I'm not saying more time, but you had to be a little bit more organized, you had to be able to post on time. You had to make sure the kids were able to get to the resources as fast as possible. And also troubleshoot if some children weren't having it. So extra prep time, really not so much. But again, it depends on the teacher or the instructor based on how tech savvy they are. I remember TeacherWeb was a big push when I arrived in the district. And I know that I helped personally for teachers that were not very computer savvy. So it would take them a little longer, but I know a couple of the teachers, Ms. Brun and I, we were the two teachers in the high school. We had everything electronically already done, so we were ready to post. Two days before, students were able to go in early and pretty much provide whatever they need.
Did you experience any increased classroom management issues, kids trying to sneak texts into your data?
No, of course. It's always, it's kind of alarming because when you get here, there's no cellphones in the classroom. So to have a couple people walk by and literally watch their heads go back because there's kids on their cellphones in the classroom right out there. I'm sure there was texting. Just walking around the room kind of helps that. But also explaining to the children that, you know, this is the only class you're gonna be able to do this in. This is a special privilege, and if you abuse the privilege, it's very easily taken away. So if you have a good rapport with the students, I didn't have too many ma- I had no major issues, but of course, a little minor ones did pop up, which, you know, could be handled in-house. So texting was big, and going on websites and playing games were the little things.
That's always a good sign.
Was that any different, though, than no passing or the conversations that go on in class?
Nothing above average. It's gonna sneakier when it's electronic with the text message. You'll hear a random giggle when you're sitting there, it was still quiet before, so it's like, wow. But again, it's gonna happen with that, because like you said, there's no passing. Before, before there was electronic, you know, texting, there was, you know, paper and pen. And I remember in high school, that's what I did. So again, nothing above average, but again, you know, just explaining to the students that, listen, this can be taken away. This isn't something that you need to have, this is something that we're trying to provide to you. A lot of the students did take it as a goodwill gesture that we're really, you know, we're trying, we're trying to make everything better, and appealed to that, and that really helped my AP classes go forward very quickly with it.
Well, it has to be a paradigm change, I think, thinking, because, you know, you have a kid in lunchroom with a cellphone. I'll have him doing homework with Mr. Howard's class, you know.
And then students would go to the classrooms and try to access. And the teacher, I get, I pretty much, I think I got about a dozen emails in the first two weeks from teachers. What are they doing? They're saying, you're saying they can do this. So I had to explain it to them, because the BYOD wasn't very well publicized in the beginning. We were able to just show the majority of the teachers that, listen, they shouldn't have it after your class if you don't allow it. But again, you know, my best, that's what they're doing.
And my last question, how about the teachers, your fears, how do they view this program and you using it?
The majority of the teachers that I've talked to love it, but they also see where the traps could be. The teachers in my department, history's now such a living content that I think the more technology we bring in, the better. The more extra resources we can bring in, the better. I know a lot of teachers would like just to be able to access the databases for attendance, for grading, for things like that. So they're not just kind of chained to their desks and chained to their computers in their classroom to do school-related business. But again, you know, I'm not saying I run with the younger crowd, but I know a lot of the younger teachers, teachers my age, you know, late twenties, early thirties, even early forties, very excited about the possibility of being able to move things electronically. Especially with the textbook situation where we're gonna move probably electronic in the next few years. You know, not having the kids look around and having to deal with, dealing with that also, teachers are excited about it.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question. The children not having devices, how much of an issue is that, and how do you work around that?
That was the biggest issue that we encountered. You know, the staff that I had, it was 45 children. Only between 20 and 23 would continually bring in the device, so you split that up. You had about 10 children per classroom, and a classroom of 24, 25. Phones also were not 100% effective in getting all the materials across and the resources. So what I would do is, because I would post everything the day before, no child was left behind by not having something. They could go home, they had it days before. Children that would bring their devices would of course be able to access the resources right away. So again, I let them team up, that was the biggest thing. If we were doing just, you know, just basic note-taking or researching, we would do partners. So everybody was given a partner at the beginning of the program, and we would be able to, you know, to kind of just get by by that. So I'm not sure if that really helped, but.
Mrs. Rukul, you asked one of my questions, larger than that, are there any other limitations that you're seeing?
The different devices also lends a little bit of a problem. We have Apple, we have Windows, we have Windows 7, we have Vista, we have older programs. You know, the amount of changes you have to do to a child's computer when they bring it in to just get it to access the internet or to be able to work, you know, in the classroom, that also we ran into. But again, our IT staff, you know, worked on it diligently to try to get every kid who brought something in on the internet as fast as possible. So that's another thing that we kind of, I wrote down a few.
What about this year with the new wireless, did that improve over the last year?
It did, and the speed is unbelievable. The kids are slowly starting to trust it more when they bring it in. The security of the device is also kind of worried a lot of the children, because a lot of the children, you know, the computer they bring in, it's a hand-me-down, it's something, you know, maybe their family has one internet device. It's a desktop computer, so they can't bring it in. Can you imagine kids looking at it? That'd be pretty funny. But again, it was, it wasn't easily accommodating, or accommodated, excuse me. It just needed a little bit of work, and the kids were very willing to share and kind of go together through the program. But the internet access restrictions, the security of the devices was a big thing. A lot of the kids had problems bringing in their computer for just one period a day because they couldn't take it out of the classrooms. So again, those were the major issues I wrote down that I really had. Students not having the device, of course, is the big one. Some, you know, nobody said that they did worse because they didn't have it, but I saw the children that did have it excel. You know, having the class PowerPoint in front of them the day of, they were able to manipulate. And notes, you know, kind of concentrate more on the presentation than on the PowerPoint and taking the notes. So I saw a lot of advantages to having it in front of them. The students that didn't have it in front of them were busy taking notes.
Do you think that if other classes allowed it, that more children would bring it in? That's what it can sound like.
Definitely.
Some of them are not bringing it in because it's only one class?
And then they would be leaving it with me, which I had a locked cabinet, which was perfect, so a lot of kids did that. But what, you know, I asked the students over the last few days, you know, I did this presentation. You know, what are some things, just that, you know, write them down and obfuscate whatever you have to do. And it was bringing, lugging in a laptop with their books for the day for only one period. So, you know, I said, well, if your books are online, they get all excited about that. So again, just the bringing it in for one period a day was a little bit taxing on them. But once, you know, I explained to them, you know, what we could do to better that, you know, they kind of warmed up to it.
Are the laptops the primary device that people are using?
Yes, laptops. I didn't see too many tablets, I didn't see too many iPads.
And how about smartphones?
Smartphones all over the place. iPods was amazing.
Are you using smartphones in your classroom as well?
Yes, the i- I'm sorry, the iPhone. Yes, the iPhone is, Siri talks to the kids. All of a sudden, I'll be in the middle of a presentation, and Siri will say what I'm saying. So the kids love that, but again, the size and, you know, Windows, I'm sorry, Mac doesn't run Flash. So any videos that I had on the PowerPoint, students would be able to access. But of course, when I went home on their Window, Windows PC, they were able to do it. So again, it's just the growing pains of the program, you know, things that we'll be able to hammer out in time. But again, it didn't really put any kids at a detriment, it just slowed down what we were trying to do.
So when you said kids were sharing, one student has a laptop, and then they're sitting together?
Let's say we had a group project of four or five, I'd make sure that there was at least two computers per group. When they're doing something where they can just, you know, join two desks together, you know, I tried to just, you know, for every day, I tried to do at least five to 10 minutes of using the BYOD, you know, where everybody can use it. And then, if you had the device, you could of course keep participating. So that's, yeah, that's what we did. So we would do groups of two, partners, I mean. And then, if we were doing group projects, which I did a few times, four, five, sometimes six. But again, we had two to three, at least two computers per group.
Okay, but from an equity perspective, you're saying, say you put two students together, and one has a laptop and one doesn't, and you said you could see an acceleration on the ones that are bringing their own device. If you had two kids together, one has it, one doesn't, does that student that doesn't, do they have access? Do you feel like home to that, or is it just that they don't have a device to bring it in?
Everything, while being posted electronically, was still provided to all students in written form in class. So PowerPoints were printed out, notes were printed out, worksheets were printed out. Everything was also just scanned into a computer and posted a day or two before. It's something I'm still trying to hammer out because I'm not trying to, you know, show the kids what I'm trying to do too far ahead of time. Equity-wise, like I said, I did see an improvement with students that 24/7 had access to a device. I did see students be able to manipulate information a lot quicker than had it in front of them before. Students, of course, would have the information with them at all times and access to it. But you're right, at home, they would have to get it and bring it in instead of being able to just access it real time.
Right, but do you find that those students that aren't bringing in, they have that accessibility at home, or do they not even have it at home?
I mean, like, I have the AP students, so again, we have a little bit more driven. I'm trying to make it a, you know, a class-type discussion. They did have access, you know, they did go out above and beyond and get it. Did I have the child, of course, when a paper was due, come in and say the printer wasn't working, of course. But they did have access. I didn't have anybody say, hey, Mr. Howard, I need to get the PowerPoint. Because like I said, I would print out 20 to 25 PowerPoints where the children would have it that day, just to have. I tried to cover all my bases because I know that, you know, if Johnny saw Timmy having a computer and was able to get it right away, and, you know, he went home and didn't have the chance to do that, there would be issues. So I tried to counteract that by having it written out there for the children.
Do you only do it in your AP classes, or you do it in all your classes?
Those are the only two classes that I know the students were allowed to log on to the student login. So we weren't able to do it with other classes. But when I took a survey of students in my other three classes, that if they were able to bring it in, the numbers were significantly lower.
I mean, now, when you say you post, say, a PowerPoint, do you do it in both versions, like you have a Mac version and a Windows version, or can they both?
There's converters, so Edmodo is the site I usually use to post all my resources. If students are able to contact me and say, hey, Mr. Howard, I couldn't do it, can you show me a converter? I'd be able to send it out, but again, that's me being a little bit more tech savvy than maybe the teacher next to me. So we didn't have any issues with that so far.
So even if they had an older version or an older software, that's all okay?
Because I save it in the older version too. I don't save it in the current 2011, 2010 office. I do the 93 to 2007. I try to just pick the biggest time period they use.
And do you find most students accessing the data at home?
Yes, oh, yes. They come in with it, and I'm like, wow, like, it's great. Because, you know, we still have to teach note-taking skills, but when you have to get through, I call it a pothole of history, and you really don't want to spend too much time with the kids writing the notes. It helps when they have it already in front of them, and then what they do is they take notes off my notes. So they're really, it's a more centralized discussion. The students come in more well-prepared for the discussion because they read the night before because it was already provided.
And are there students that are not doing it the night before because they don't have access?
Of course. Well, not because they don't have access, I haven't seen any children say, well, I mean, I get the internet is down excuse all the time.
Okay, but they have the capabilities at home, so you don't have that inequity in these classes?
No. And again, days before, I have written copies of what we're gonna do. So like, we just finished chapter seven today, we actually just tested on it yesterday during our review. I laid out PowerPoints packets, whatever we're gonna do for the first few days, so the children have it before they go on break.
But are you providing anything that's on an interactive nature, or is this anything that could just be reproduced on paper?
When we do interactive, it's, that's when it's in class. Because again, I can't assign something that I'm not sure little Timmy has at home.
Mr. Howard, I understand what you're saying about the AP classes, but is this something you can see happening in the other classes also?
Yes, just talking about it with the children, I see excitement. Being able to work in all classes at all levels with this would be absolutely amazing. Especially my content, I'm seeing amazing things in history right now. We can take virtual field trips, we can get these children interested in things that they didn't even think was out there. You know, their bubble is just Sable, and we can expand it unbelievably. It's getting the devices to the children, it's having them trust that, you know, they're secure, and this will help their education. I'm just like, you know, you have that, you know, disaffected student, you have that one student that no matter what you do, it won't matter, but you still try to reach, you still try to do things.
Right, because I'm sure there's kids in non-AP that would.
Yes, I mean, there's a student in my class that was involved, had a lot of storm damage. Lived in a part of town that was very badly damaged in a hurricane. And I said, hey, listen, you have a tablet or a laptop, and he has a hand-me-down laptop. I said, bring it in, and I'll give you everything ahead of time. You know, before, the kid was not dozing off, but the kid was, you know, disaffected, he didn't want to do anything. And now, at least he's looking through things, he's able to access things, he's engaged in class. So again, it took, you know, it took a week to get that going, but hopefully it'll continue on the good path.
You said that grades had improved. How did you quantify that? Is that just a sense that you have, because, I mean, we're in, basically, we're in the end of October because we lost the last two weeks. You've got these students branding now.
This was last year that I saw, I saw, you know, testing.
This is the second half of last year?
Yes, so I saw the testing from, I don't know if it was just maybe they were more familiar with the program, but first, second semester test scores, you know, median were in the B range. And then I saw the students, you know, slowly creeping up into the A-minus range, and then some earning As. And I asked a few of them, they said it was because when, while we were taking notes or while we were doing activities, since they had it in front of them, they were able to concentrate more on what was being taught and not the, not the classwork, the housework, you know, taking the notes. Students have it, it's already provided, they can type it out, typing's a lot quicker than writing. I saw, they told me that the review was a lot quicker. The reviews were better for them because they weren't bogged down in finding the information, they could just pull it right up.
Mr. Adley, I'd be very interested in that data, if we can, you know, kind of quantify it.
I could find, I have five students I looked at that, since I have access to the grades from last year, I can probably quantify that for you.
So do you see that you drove expanding this type thing to other classes?
I love it. I get so excited just thinking that, you know, students might be able to literally not have textbooks. And I was able to download a few of the history textbooks electronically and the capabilities. Hopefully, the textbook companies will start catching up too, because they're just posting what it is. They're not giving us interactive videos, they're not doing that. But if, hopefully, the push goes more to electronic, to have this in science, I mean, could you just imagine seeing the videos in science in a bio class? Being able to, you know, create structures in chem, you know, having, you know, molecules that you'd be able to click and drag. I mean, it's just what I've seen, because I've just watched almost every video on YouTube and tried to contact as many companies. I have like 12 emails coming in a day from people trying to sell me a BYOD program. And I don't have the heart to tell them where you have it. So again, I'm just being bombarded with just all the possibilities. And also what I've seen in college, I keep in touch with a few of the alumni, and what they're seeing in college too. You know, we can really prepare them for it, just so they don't walk in day one and go, you know, because I did that. I gave into a religion course in college, and this was back in, you know, the early 2010s. I was like, oh my God, this whole class, like this whole textbook, all the quizzes, everything's online and gets sent to the teacher. This was the first time I've ever had anything electronically done. So I even had a little bit of a, you know, shock that, oh my God, we're gonna do this electronically. So if we can kind of dull that shock and the kids can run with it, like I saw, you know, I think the possibilities are endless. But again, it's getting the devices in the hands, it's making sure that the children are able to access, you know, very easily. Because I know a lot of people get discouraged, you know, after the third, fourth try on the login, you know, they'd be like, okay, and they shut down. So the computer, they didn't shut down. So the, the computer, they didn't shut down, but the computer did.
Yes, just real quick, I give you credit for starting this. Second of all, the issue that I would think of as apparent would be, first of all, the security for the device. The second issue that would be is the abuse of the device. You know, because as, you know, we look through a suspension list that comes through and you'll see electronic devices. Have you thought a process of establishing, first of all, a security measure that, for the devices with the students? Second of all, have you came up, come up with some type of program?
Security.
Literature, the, the rules of, such as rules of engagement of when and how and disciplinary action that could be taken if you abuse this?
What I did was I just went over our already accepted, technology accessible use program that we have at the school. Students were basically told, if you go down to the library and do this, you know you're in trouble. So what is it any different from you using the laptop in front of you hooked up to the school internet? What makes you think you could still go on questionable websites or, or abuse, use messaging programs when they're not supposed to? Again, in, in class, things that I did was just walk around the room, have any of the computers facing me no matter where I was, you know, have the, the children, you know, in the groups, making sure I can see screens. Of course, I think we're gonna have to develop, you know, a couple of new things. But again, you know, with every advance that we do, there's gonna be growing pains. There's always gonna be that few kids that are, you know, you're gonna break the mold and go on something they shouldn't. I think also though, if we provide certain technology and we give kids a little bit of freedom, they won't try to grab it, that they'll just gradually, you know, if we tell them that, listen, this is your device for four years, if we give it to the freshman here, you know, you have to take care of this. This is, you know, your property. I think them owning it, you know, will make those problems, they will still exist, of course, but I think they'll be less than what we, we kind of think. Because, again, talking with, with all my kids, they're like, they, you know, oh my God, you know, a new toy. And I know, and I ask them, like, listen, if we just give it to the freshmen, what do you see there? Popcorn. They were upset. Well, why do they get it? Why don't we get it? So why doesn't it be given to everybody? Will they be safe? Yeah, nobody's gonna steal something they already have. Are you guys gonna go off bad websites? Not bad websites in school, but are you gonna download apps that you shouldn't? Some of them said, yeah, but, like, are you gonna play them in school? They're like, well, if we're engaged, if we're actually doing something, then no, we're not gonna have time to do that. So again, it's finding the fit, it's finding the teacher, it's finding the group of kids that trust and believe that this is for their own good. Again, that's, it's something that we can always accomplish, oh, not accomplish, but strive to accomplish. But we're gonna need, you know, new tech, tech thing, you know, and expand just how we watch the kids when they, when they have the devices.
I'm sorry. What kind of professional development do you see would be needed to help teachers get on board and bring your own devices? Not necessarily one-to-one initiative, but a bring-your-own-device initiative.
I mean, we could, of course, run it in the school, just talk with the teachers that are involved, you know, just give me support, maybe those teachers to document the positives, the negatives, the, you know, the wins, the losses, what, you know, how they accomplish what they accomplish. That's good, but again, you know, you just type into Google BYOD, there's plenty of sources that are starting to kind of run workshops. It's almost kind of like, let the teachers begin the way they want to use it and then see if we can keep increasing and get everybody on the same page. Because like I said, I post everything, but I know, you know, another teacher did post everything. So again, it's just kind of, you know, we, we can add to, to the education of the teachers to do this. But again, there has to be the support in place. I guess maybe just workshops within the school first. I know the smart boards were introduced. I love those smart board programs that we provided. You know, I, I could only sit in on one for a few minutes, but I learned things that, you know, I'd been using the smart board for two years and I didn't even know it did certain things. So those are great, you know, just the in-house ones are great. You know, I know we have PLC committees, you know, we probably have, you know, switch it over to that, you know, for the high school, we can do a little more topic based. But, you know, teachers do need to, to be in the know. I know teachers will first use it to help with their, their classwork, their grading, their attendance, you know, it would be great to go around the, the room with an iPad to be able to say, okay, Johnny's not here. You can send an email to Johnny's parents or, no, Johnny's not here. That's, I know, step one. The teachers are dying for that. And then hopefully incorporating it to the classroom would be the second step.
We do have through, not to put off Mr. Howard, but we do have through Barbara DeSantis and Edmodo websites that have for teachers, that accessible to teachers, that explain what BYOD is and how BYOD can be implemented in the classroom. So we're, we're getting to that point, starting to provide that information to teachers as well.
And we are also sending, as Madam Patrick, it's on the agenda for tonight. We have two high school teachers who are going to outside workshops and to school business, so strictly on BYOD, so they can turnkey it to some of the other teachers. And so we're gonna be looking to do that sort of thing too, you know, not doing the in-house stuff plus sending teachers out and then having them come back and turnkey with the others. But there are two teachers on tonight's agenda who will be going.
And I, I did two webinars, I'm sorry, it's just like, I did two webinars as well where I was able to access and then get into a conversation with people that were using it. I was talking with people from Texas, Tennessee, and I believe Michigan, how they were incorporating it. There were administrators, there was teachers, there was tech people, you know, it was almost every facet of the program. And we were able to kind of ask questions. I did that one with Mr. Gentile in his office. And it was, it was informative enough to, you know, you have to have that spark, you have to have the ideas in your head already. And you just need to, to realize when the tools are set out in front of you that you can run with it. And that's, that's the big thing. If the spark's not there, you can, you can nail it to a wall. People still aren't gonna figure it out. You have to already have the ideas in your head, and then when they're, the tools are provided to you, you know, that's, like I said, this BYOD, I've already had these ideas. And when BYOD came, I jumped at it because, like I said, I want the kids to be electronically connected to the class at any time, not necessarily with me, but with the class resources. So if, you know, the night before a test, they're, they're weak on something and they didn't take notes on it, they missed the day of school, they can just go on and download it.
Excellent.
I have one other question. The, for infrastructure, you said you had restricted wireless capabilities. Is that still occurring now? Is it something that's easy to fix?
It is easy to fix. However, we need, like, we needed to have an IT professional in the classroom to help with the settings on computers. And then also, and I know this is, is an everyday changing thing, certain websites are blocked that shouldn't be blocked, and I understand why they're blocked. I'm not gonna sit here and argue with any of the, the blocked websites or why they're blocked. But again, to have, you know, just constant contact with the IT, just saying, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna access this website in, in two days, make sure it's not blocked. It's, again, it's just, that's the prep time that you need to, to fully succeed in the program. If you go in that day and try to get on a Yahoo article about something that's a little, you know, touchy, and you get blocked, then I believe that's, you know, it's your own fault for not prepping and getting it, you know, going. But that was the limit.
But it's not difficult to unlock?
Nope. I mean, it takes time, and that, that's the only thing. But again, if we go slowly, step by step, you know, eventually we'll find quicker ways to fix the, the problems.
So then after you access that, say, that day for the lesson, do, does the tech people go back the next day and put the block back in?
I have experienced it, yeah.
Mr. Douglas, remember that if it's blocked, it has to be approved first by administrator or their supervisors to get it unblocked. And once it's unblocked, it's, the supervisor gets the, an opportunity to review it. So if it feels that it's blocked because, you know, give you a science class, breast cancer, they do breast cancer, because the word breast is a, comes up, it's automatically blocked. Now, now the administrator can say, you know, Ms. Krasinski can tell the type person, no, this is a, this is an okay scientist, an approved scientist, they can go on.
So then once it's unblocked, it's, it's done. It's not just unlocked for the lesson?
Yeah.
And that falls to the supervisor to decide?
It will or to the building principal, it's all that.
It has to go up the chain, you know, just like any media we use in the classroom, it's got to be a supervisor first. And thank you for the example, Mr. Douglas. That's great, like, you know, breast cancer, we just, October was breast cancer awareness month. So again, you know, something like that. And what's great is when we find blocked websites that shouldn't be blocked, it also helps IT to identify, you know, better ways to, to restrict, but also give freedom to the students. So it's kind of like a working relationship.
Do you have a different level of things that are blocked versus what a student's so?
I don't believe I have. I haven't tried to give a test, but again, I know I have access to the internet. I know, you know, not every teacher in my building does. So again, I use that to my advantage when necessary, but I haven't seen too many problems with that. And like I said, in, in history, you know, we do current events and things of that nature, but we haven't really researched anything, you know, let's just say, three times out of 10, I've had an issue where I just had to go somewhere else looking for what I was looking for. You know, two out of times out of 10 is where I was officially blocked, couldn't, couldn't get around.
Mr. Howard, excellent presentation.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Obviously, this is a high EDA, I'm glad for the board. We're gonna have you come back, and I think I speak for all women, we'd much rather talk about things like this than other things that we talk about.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate your time. Okay, moving on with the agenda. Everybody saw the monthly technology maintenance report. Anybody have any questions or comments on those before we press on? Hearing none. Minutes, I think the division was posted on the table today.
Yes.
Mrs. DeFinto, Mrs. Rucuya.
Yes.
Mrs. Craft.
Yes, student council representative. Tony, what do you think about this bring-your-own-device to school?
I think it's a great idea personally because I've actually taken two college courses already, and, and both of those college courses are a lot, both of the classes are technology-based, everything was on the laptop, all PowerPoints were, your laptop thing, like your laptop and everything, and phones, and things like, majority of our class, like that, so it's a great idea.
Excellent. Thank you. What's going on on campus?
For the most part, it seemed like students were more than happy to return to the school after the two-week-long ordeal. Most of the class time on the first day back was spent discussing our experiences and making sure that everybody was alright. The hurricane seemed to bring everybody closer together, and it showed past Friday when we finally held the check out. Thankfully, bullying was a major issue, and a large thanks goes to the senior class for being responsible and discouraging the other classmates from doing anything appropriate. In terms of fundraising, our YB candle sales underway, and for next month, we're planning to hold tours with hazard bin in order to benefit those affected by hurricane sensing.
Thank you, Tony. Appreciate it. We don't have a parent-involved representative, so, Dr. Douglas, Mr. Vice President.
We have one. Congratulations are in order for the Samson Upper Elementary School for winning the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protections NJDEP Award for Outstanding Achievement in Recycling, an honor they rightfully deserve. The Samson Upper Elementary School was nominated by Elise Barone and Terry Yetzko from the Recycling Commission at Serebrow Borough Hall for their Continuous Recycling Program, a Compostor Recycling Project, and Waste-Free Lunch Program. As a result of the Waste-Free Lunch Program, students are using more reusable containers and recycling their paper bags. The faculty also uses reusable lunch bags, coffee mugs, and thermoses. The school's recycling efforts are paying off with a dramatic increase in the amount of paper and cardboard recycled. Thank you to the students and staff at the Samson Upper Elementary School for helping keep our planet and town green. And I think because of all the disturbances caused from the storm, we had a presentation planned this evening on that very program, but that'll now be held in January, correct? So we'll learn more about that in January when they come before the board to give a presentation.
Okay, great. Another excellent thing coming out of the Samson Elementary School. Buildings and ground, oh, Dr. Brown, how about you, Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Mr. Mackinon. Section A, buildings and grounds, there's a few building uses, one for Samson, two for Samson Upper Elementary School. Any questions with those two building uses? None. Moving to B, finance, the first 12 are the regular resolutions that we have each year. Thirteen is a new position, school psychologist. Basically, we've had it in the budget, we've just never gotten wrong putting it in. Fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, Mr. DeAndrew, would you just quickly go through those?
Number fourteen is a change order credit from Rochelle Contracting for the baseball field renovation. There were some punch list items that all the parties involved, the baseball coach, the athletic director, and Dennis agreed were not necessary, so we took the credit. Instead, basically had to do with the width of the baseline that no umpire had an issue with last year, so we took the credit. Item number fifteen is a new item required by the state that the board approves items that are being purchased for the non-public schools. So you're gonna see more of these things start happening, that you're gonna be required to approve it before the expenditure can be made in that regard. Number sixteen is an independent audit report from the Universal Service Commission, Services. What they did was they audited how we process the monies that are used for federal funds under the Communication Act and funding. So we passed that with no problem. So I'm just asking the board to accept that this evening. No corrective action required. Number seventeen is an ongoing effort to do our part to be energy conscious, and what it requires is the first step is for the board to agree to allow me to file for an application whereby if the application is accepted, we'll have an energy audit done, and then the state pays for it, or an agency then pays for that audit. So this is the first requirement that we file to get approval from the board to file that application, and then there are other procedures that move forward in selecting a person or a company to do the energy audit also. Thank you, Mr. DeAndrew. Moving to page five, number eighteen is a disposal of equipment. Nineteen is a preschool outcome study. We are being reimbursed to $3,456. This runs through our special education program. I don't believe we finished it, but I believe Pat Martino is working on it. And finally, the establishment of a part-time aid because the kindergarten classroom goes in school, went over the required amount of 25. Any questions with that section?
On B, number three, check number 124920, I'm gonna go Nellon. You know, I'm gonna stay on number eight.
What is the check that you're going Nellon?
RCC, consultant state telephone audit. I was against your contract a couple of years ago, and we're stopped paying for it, even though we switched to light vision, yeah, cable pack, cable vision, light pack.
Okay.
Question. Number seventeen, this on it, what is the cost and what does that $100,000 mean?
The $100,000 is the maximum amount you can apply for. I do not know the cost. Again, this is the first step. Then what happens if you get approval? You have to go out for an RFP for selecting firms to do it, and the process moves along.
Okay, so this is just?
No, I mean, this is just saying I can file for it.
And number thirteen, you said this is in the budget, so if it's in the budget, why do we have to approve a new position?
Because we always do for the control, for the control position. And we have to do it, this is just a formality. Well, this, Frank, remember, this was the position. It was an outside consultant that we brought in. Yeah, that we brought in.
So then this position is not in the budget?
It's in the budget as a consultant that we're gonna bring in a salaried person.
So why are we not sticking with a consultant?
Because it's actually cheaper to do it this way.
How is that cheaper?
We get a full-time person at a part-time price.
But it's gonna cost us more money?
No.
It's not gonna cost us more money?
No, and you got that in your packet. No.
Right, and because in the, in the email you sent, you said it was, it was only budgeted at $40,000.
Right, and with some of the breakage in the other areas, I think this position turns out to about $45,000, $46,000 with breakage of people that were retiring in that department. We probably had about another $50,000.[1615.82]
Right, but putting breakage aside, which should...
It's a few dollars over, but you're getting a full-time person versus someone who would have been working an hourly, based on an hourly rate, probably two, three days a week, is where you get a full-time person.
But based on your finances, you had it was forty-seven, seven plus fifteen, so it was sixty-two thousand, but the budget only has forty. But this is, this is a permanent position, and it carries over?
No, 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 it was prorated. You're reading a full-time person. If you read through the whole thing...
Right, it's prorated for this year, but what happens to next year?
Well, next year we would have to determine whether or not we want to keep this position if it's budgeted. This would be the same kind of thing as if we were budgeted. It was almost, it was almost a wash by doing it this way.
Okay, so...
Next year would have to be budgeted. This is just a one-year position.
So it's just temporary, and then he goes back and he'll go back to budgeting?
Yes, yes, and if, you know, I mean, right now there's a need for it. I mean, I have the Director of Special Services saying that the case studies are exploding and all the services because of all the children that we're bringing back into the district. So we'll have to take a look at that, and, you know, certainly, it's, it's, right now it's a one-year position. If, if we can't afford it, we will do it. Okay, moving to...
Dr. McEnroe, I just need to abstain on the check for premier break solutions. Thank you.
Okay, page five, personnel not certified. We have a retirement, a few resignations, a transfer, lateral transfer, a few paraprofessionals that are being hired on page six. Ms. Restivo is going to replace the retiring Director of Special Services Secretary, her salary is listed there, and substitutes for non-certificated. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to D, Personnel Certified. We have a retirement of Ms. Kenny, the nurse. We have a resignation, unfortunately, we just hired this individual and she has some personal problems and had to leave. So it wasn't anything that we were doing, it's something that she had to go. Suspension is listed as such. We have an unpaid medical leave, FMLA, a few pregnancy leaves, and a leave of absence is listed, resignation of a few coaching positions, and a life strategies facilitator for the 2012-13 is listed. This is for a set of the detention program. Number eleven are a number of hires for this month again, for certified individuals is listed. Some coaching assignments is listed as well on page nine. Personal coaching unpaid aids is listed also on page nine and ten. Extra critical assignments and salaries, Mr. Kraft, as listed. Professional days as noted on pages ten and eleven. And just to let you know, for the one that we just talked about, if you look on page eleven, I believe it's Michelle and Elizabeth that are going to that B I O D training. So that's, that's what we had just discussed. Sixteen is a substitute list, and seventeen is the, which was added, was the resignation of a teacher. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to E, Policy. I'm going to defer to Mr. Agles. This is our District Performance Review and Statement of Assurance on the New Jersey CUSAC. All the, on the back of the highlights that you received for the staff, I'm sorry, for the audience, there's a blurb on the back of the, on the back of the highlights that basically explains, and the, and the board has it in their packet in their closed agenda. I believe it's the back of the closed agenda, and you can see that there's a little bit of a statement on the CUSAC and what we're doing today.
Very quickly, the, we're finishing the first phase of New Jersey CUSAC, which is the self-assessment. And the self-assessment, as Dr. McEnroe said, was made available to the board members. It's also posted online with some of the breakdowns, bringing in instruction eighty-six percent, our fiscal a hundred percent, governance ninety-eight, personnel eighty, and operations ninety percent. Instruction, it's kind of guesswork only because the first six questions for the District Performance Review are really provided by the state, and we haven't gotten that yet. We took the best guess, going through them, and we have an idea of where we fall. But other than that, all the other questions would have been answered by us as far as the self-assessment. We're entering into the second phase of the process with the monitors coming in, probably by January, but Dr. McEnroe will be notified exactly when that, that'll happen, and that might be pushed off because of the two weeks we've lost. Not only us, but the, but the state. But, but we feel very confident through our self-assessment that, that we're on track and that we're past monitoring, and we shouldn't have any issues.
As also part of the first stage, we submitted policy and we submitted the curriculum as a desk audit, and also Mr. DeAndrew is waiting for his audit, and so they'll go through a desk audit, and then they'll come in either in December, partly in December and some in January, and hopefully by the end of the school year, we'll have the results. Because basically what they do is we do a self-assessment, which is the first part, the State Department comes in and does the second part, and we, and they basically reimburse the C, you know, what we saw and what they see is the same thing. Last year we were a high-ranking school, last time we went, which was in 2009, so they do that every three years. So we are approving it, we will be sending it off to the county, we, and the state, we have until, one more week to send it in, and then they'll notify us when they're going to do Stage Two. Okay, moving on to F, Curriculum. Harassment, intimidation, and bullying reports eleven through eighteen, and the recommendation of the Board's Discipline Committee. As a result, the student discipline hearing was held on November fifteenth. Will be approved also tonight. Number three on page thirteen is a revised revision in the school calendar for the 2012-13 school year due to Hurricane Sandy. Students and staff will report on Monday, January twenty-first, February eighteenth, and students and staff will report June twenty-first, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth. Last day for students will be the twenty-fifth. Curriculum as listed will also be approved tonight. We have an additional kindergarten student by law. We have to list that individual. Special services, you see the different services that we are providing for these youngsters. If you go to page fifteen, the Board of Education for first marking period, we're changing the first marking period to end a few weeks later, which is November twenty-first, and we're giving a little bit of time so that the teachers have some time to get the report cards out, which is due down to December fourth. Probably at the next meeting, we will alter the second marking period and the third marking period. We haven't a chance to do that so that we kind of try to get forty days or forty-five days in each of the calendars. And finally, retroactively, Treadwell, kindergarten student. Any questions with that section?
I have to talk to them.
Hold on, if there's going to be some discussion about the, the schedule, might as well, let's do it now. We go about item number three on page thirteen.
I also got a question.
Me too.
All right, who has a question that's not related to that first?
I do.
Mr. DeAndrew?
On the report card issued date of December fourth, that's post the conferences, how are we dealing with that?
Parental basis.
I, I know, yeah, is that going to be an issue that we...
We had discussion, Marilyn.
I don't think it's going to be an issue, honestly, because with the parent portal, the parents can go on, they can check the grades. The marking period will have been closed, certainly, and the teachers will be working on finalizing their grades. So I'm sure at conferences, the teachers will be able to talk to the parents about what the grades will be on the report card. And also, it's, it's also an opportunity not to necessarily just talk about the particular final grade of the quarter, but also just to talk generally about how the students are doing, and I think, I think they can still have that good conversation even with the report cards being issued right after that. I think the teachers will pretty much know by the time of the conferences where the children's scale of their grades. Okay, I, I, I think they'll be able to...
What was the rationale of why we didn't change the conferences along with the marking period?
It's very hard to, to change all that because we have, we have a board meeting following week, and just with the whole scheduling aspect of it. It was tough to do this so quickly, even changing the date of the marking period and the report cards, honestly.
We also spoke with the, we also spoke with the building principals, and they felt that keeping it as it was scheduled would be in the best interest of their teachers, their buildings, and the parents, so we took into consideration their thinking on it as well.
How many days between the conference and the report card issue?
Well, the, the, November twenty-first is when the marking period closes.
Tomorrow.
The report cards, right, the report cards are December fourth, which is...
And when's the conference?
The conference...
They start November twenty-seventh. You know, to reset...
People know December twenty-seventh that the kids fail.
Correct.
Look, logistically, it was really the biggest thing we were concerned about. We're pushing ourselves into the middle of, you know, the winter, all the winter concerts.
Right, right.
And it was, there was a lot, and no matter what nights we tried to push them to, we were going to have problems.
If we're all, if we're all on parent portal and the grades are all current, is there an opportunity to pull the report card they in? And I realize we, we won't be able to do it that month.
Kevin, we had an extensive discussion with the principals. These are the dates that they approved. They said, we, you know, originally we wanted to make it a little bit earlier. They kind of pushed back and said, no, we prefer to do it the twenty-first. We'd like to get the children to be able to make sure that they can make up the work. You know, there was a lot of, there was a lot of, we didn't want to push too much because, you know, all the information we received about Hurricane Sandy and children coming back to school is like that first week was sort of like...
We wanted ketchup.
Ketchup.
Okay.
You know, don't, don't have them because you're going to get, you got so much, you know, riding right now, and we want to just make them feel comfortable, acclimate them, and that's what we did. We took the advice of the traumatic counselor who came in and gave us a lot of information through Donna Sikola. So that was the reasons why we, we basically kept it that way. Conferences were just a logistic nightmare to move them because you had a board meeting, then you had, you know, you had all of these functions that are going on at night, and it's just, we just felt that we'd be better.
Remember, this is the first year they don't conflict any.
Correct, no, and I understand, I understand moving the marking period, I didn't understand what the huge gap was between the marking period close and December fourth, if we're all electronic. But if it's makeup work, that helps.
Well, we wanted to go a little bit earlier, but it, once again, we wanted to give the teachers a little bit more time and the principals because everything is so backlog. So we just said, okay, but, but like you're saying, the grades will be on the parent portal. That's why we said, okay, November twenty-first. So the teachers and the parents who utilize that will have that information in front of them when they go to conferences. And let's face it, most of the parents, or, or teachers know when the youngster comes in, they'll be discussing pretty much the end of the first marking period. They will have usually most of the, most of the grades done by then.
With all these calendar changes, is there, is the New Jersey ASK testing going to be changed, or...
No, we don't have, we don't have, we don't have any saying that.
So... That's written in stone, pretty much, that statewide.
And God forbid, you know, we get a lot of snow, who, who knows, but they're not going to change those days.
So those days are...
No.
Those are secure tests.
Tom, do you have a question?
I do.
Tom, okay.
Mr. Agles, on page thirteen, number four, these following courses that you have listed here. One of my concerns, as a board member has always been, is this revision is only exclusive to Searle for what I've suggested over a period of time is trying to incorporate the curriculums of combining like something for all of twenty-five, I think, school districts, Middlesex County. Is this, this is just exclusive, or did you take a combination looking at some of the district, other districts such as East Brunswick, maybe South Brunswick, North Brunswick, Edison, or, and was that train of thought brought into this decision?
I think that we've had this discussion before, and my response to you at that time was that as we're going into the forty-six states using common, common core assessments and so forth, that you're going to probably see a lot more of that. No, the ones that, that are listed here were ones that we had to do by, by the state and have them done by a certain time period. Some of them are right on the money, some of them are a little ahead, but these were all the ones, for the most part, had to be done within a certain time period.
I'd answer your question, Mr. DeShawn. Core standards are coming out. There's a lot of frameworks that are very similar that everybody's going to follow, and we're going to start to utilize those that is coming out from the federal government, from the state, actually not from the state department, right, through PARC and all these assessment. So yes, in your, in your answer, this is all going to become electronic, and a lot of this information is going to be universal.
Okay, so in other words, what, my, my main concern is that over a period of time, you know, say X school has a better curriculum than Y school.
Right.
Where, where everyone should have the same curriculum throughout...
Well, the curriculum will be unique, I think, in each of the districts. However, the actual assessments, the actual frameworks, the actual activities, and those things are going to all be listed on the Department of Education website. If you go on right now, there's a ton of information out there that is bringing in all this stuff. The curriculum, the government really doesn't want a uni, they don't want to get involved in the business of curriculum. But they are getting involved in how you teach, what you teach, and so on, and the assessment. So they're getting very crystal clear on what it is they want kids or children to learn in each and every course. It's, it's pretty amazing what's on the...
So with the Common Core, do you see us going to unify curriculum?
Um, that's a hard question, Phil. I don't see it, you know, like a county-wide curriculum. I just, it, it just, I don't see that happening soon. But I think sooner or later, I agree with, with you guys, that people are going to come together and write a unified curriculum, say, for the county. And it does make sense, but everybody's unique, and a lot of, like right now, everybody's still doing their own. But it's still geared towards the standards. Remember, the core standards is really what drives everything, which basically is the core of any curriculum. So anything that you're writing, the standards and the, and the student progress indicators are what's really driving the curriculum, the objectives. All we're really writing, Mr. DeShawn, is the objectives. We're writing some of the activities. We necessarily don't even have to write the activities anymore because they're all listed. They're all listed by grade, they're all listed by subject, and as they keep putting this on the web, it's going to get bigger and bigger and bigger. So we're, basically, that's what we're doing now, and it's, it's, it's really very helpful, and it's only going to get better from now on.
My question is, how, how is this curriculum aligned to the Common Core now? Because I believe that was our goal. So what's changed about what's here that we're approving?
The standards had to, for some of them, it was just an adaptation. For other ones, they had to take what we've had, what we've had in the past and align it with the new Common Core.
So you just assigned to the standard, or has the curriculum, because the curriculum does need to change.
Right. Some, some of it has, like, for example, with, with the AP Bio and Chem, they had, there were specific changes that Ms. Kshinsky was having her, her people do to, to be aligned. No, I know it's not on there, but I'm just saying, some of them will, some of them for, for some of them, we did the alignments for the new, for the new standards, and some of them, some of the curriculum has stayed the same, it's just the alignment of the, the activities were aligned to new Common Core.
I wanted to know how. Like, like what, it, it just the activities, where the activities changed?
Well, some of them were the assessments where it had to be added because we, one of the things that we're looking at is the formative assessments that are coming out through the state that we're going to have to incorporate and utilize in order to have the, have the curriculum aligned with how we're now following the student progress. A lot of that's going to have to do with the formative assessments that we didn't necessarily have in all the curriculum report.
Thank you.
Not related to the schedule?
Correct.
Okay. Right.
So I saw that on number five, there is one new student, kindergarten student, it's Eisenhower. I'm wondering if he was a dislocated student, and if there are, if we, did we see of any?
I don't believe that's a student who was dislocated due to the storm. I have not heard of any students we have come in due to the storm. We have had some, we've had a lot of students who have been displaced from their homes. We're up to, I, I just received about six or seven more names today. It's a little hard getting some of the names because some of the parents are not notifying us, they're just transporting the children on their own. We're up to about one hundred thirty-five to one hundred and forty students district-wide that were, that were displaced. A few have been able to move back to their homes. We had a few who have actually moved out of the district, who have transferred to other districts.
Are we busing any?
Yes, yes, we are busing a fairly considerable number. I couldn't give you the exact number. We're busing students from Old Bridge, Perth Amboy, Avonale, Linden, East Brunswick. We, we have some people who are staying in hotels and motels.
Is there a distance limit? Like, can we go to Tom's River or Cape May and bus somewhere? Like, how, how does it work?
In my conversations with people, people are really staying pretty close. Basically, if someone's displaced due to the storm, they're considered homeless, and when someone's considered homeless, they have to work with the school district. We work, the school district works with the parents to decide the best educational placement for the child. What we're doing is we're encouraging everyone to try to have the children stay in school here and so forth.
If someone's in, if someone's in Tom's River, let's just say, or...
Their family happened to be in Tom's River.
The, the, the governor was very clear, and the Department of Education, that that youngster has to be educated in that school system, and we would obviously reciprocate with tuition.
Right, we would pay tuition.
Oh, so that's...
And then when they come back, when they come back, they would easily get back in.
But so far, even those who have been far away, we had a family who was in Sea Caucus for about the first week or so. They managed to come back, they have housing here in town. We were not providing transportation to Sea Caucus because first of all, it takes a while to get those arrangements made. Transportation has been working very, very hard on making these arrangements.
Right, nor did that parent ask for that. In fact, we spoke with them, they said, no, we prefer to drive.
Right.
I think it was a daughter reaction.
Yes, I, I think it was two, actually, and if it's the family you're thinking of, they moved back close to town. We're transporting, let's say, Wilson School was particularly impacted, the elementary schools. We have some Wilson students who are living across town temporarily. We were transporting them from where they're living to Wilson School, you know, so we're, you know, we're working with that.
Helen had asked a question. Any, any of these costs associated with additional transportation being grossed on the PMA, are we tracking that?
We are told to keep track of it and that we will be able to...
Hope for the best.
Hope for the best and hopefully applying for some reimbursement.
Also, with my...
What I've done with the budget process, I've actually started to establish some new line accounts by categories so that when the time comes that we can file for an application for FEMA reimbursement or even some insurance reimbursement, I'm actually allocating certain line items so that we're putting those expenses right there so that we can track them a lot easier.
Also with reimbursement, rather than doing the busing for the out-of-town students, would we be able to reimburse parents that transport their, their children? would we be able to reimburse parents that transport their children in?
No, I swear to God, I'm shedlocked about this. And first of all, there's a number of different requirements for that. It has to be, they have that particular insurance policy, and only a certain distance. And there's a lot of different factors that go into that. So, that's not something we're looking at right now. And the reimbursement rate is a per diem rate.
It's a per diem, based by the steam, all that sort of.
Right.
There's a lot more involved than just saying, we'll pay you. You have to prove why you're paying.
I think the insurance coverage rates are a lot higher on automobile. But typically, you have to have the same insurance provider for your home as you do your automobile, so you can bridge coverage. Because it's not a standard, the standard limits will not allow you to transport, even your own child, which is amazing, but, yeah.
Right, you have to have an umbrella policy. Now, these parents have been displaced, they're going through so many different insurance issues. You know, really, everyone's been working really, really hard in getting the kids to school. Many of the parents want to take their children either to their old bus stop, or actually drive them to school. But, you know, and people are moving from place to place. I have one, there's one family that, this is now the third hotel that they've been in since last Tuesday. So, you know, it's constantly making the different arrangements. But everyone is, you know, working, and, you know, we're doing whatever we can for the families and for the parents.
Is that it?
Okay, now, I guess, there's some discussion on, Mr. Pinto, on the proposed calendar, how to fix the days that we lost.
I'm just not agreeing with adding the last three days to the end of the school year at this time, especially since we were just discussing that the testing is not going to be moved. I am thinking that adding the last three days are not going to help our students, when testing is going to occur at the same time. Wouldn't it be more beneficial for the children to go earlier, rather than later, and make up some of the academic time? That's my opinion. So, like during spring break.
Then the only day he's left would be to take three days off of spring break. Does anybody else agree with him?
I agree with you, too. AP testing, too, I think, if you add it, too, that's a certain time. These kids, we've got some time in classrooms, and June is not going to help them, so. But June could be real hot, they could end up having half days, and this way they get full days in April or in March.
Mr. Trapp, you okay?
I agree with the January and February days. I would like to have, for the spring break, to have that Monday and Tuesday be academic days, and then Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the following Monday off, which brings us one extra day in June. And part of my reason with that is because we, chances are, we're going to have snow days. And already, we would be going until June twenty-one would be the last day of school, in my eyes. So, and then after, after some snow days, now, I would rather add the snow days into June rather than in April. Does that make sense? I don't know, I kind of bounced around a little bit.
Doesn't really make sense, I mean, I understand what you're saying, yes.
Just so that people know, I surveyed the county. I had a county meeting the other day. Of the twenty-four districts that replied, that we were there, about fourteen of them were twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, or twenty-eighth. A few districts were, the week before, let's say, twenty, and some were the month day. So, we're kind of the average by going June twenty-fifth. My only concern with doing that, remember, guys, you're talking about no days off for kids, literally, January, February, and only a few days in March. Then you're going into April, May, and June. That's a long haul. I don't think it has anything to do with testing. Okay? The bottom line is, is that I made the recommendation based on the, what I thought was the easiest to do. If you're, you know, I also threw out December, twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. I know you don't want to do that, but you're doing basically the same thing by pulling days off the spring break.
Yeah, but if we open on December twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, we're opening the building and putting on heat. We'll be doing that in March.
I would think in March we're going to have heat, but that's besides the point. I mean, look, you guys certainly can do what you think that you did. Some people say to me, you know, the majority of the people, why did you survey? I said, look, even if I survey people, I'm going to get, I don't know, sixty percent that want to do it one way, and forty percent are going to want to do it the other. No matter what, I'm going to have parents or teachers that are going to be upset either way. And, you know...
Twenty answers from fifteen people.
Right, and, you know, what do I do? If I got, you know, a thousand staff members, and forty percent, you know, want it one way, and sixty percent want it another, no matter what, four hundred are not going to be happy. And vice versa, if you've got six thousand parents, you know, and maybe more, ten thousand when you add two parents, you're talking about, you know, four thousand of them, one way or the other, are going to be happy, or five thousand, or six thousand. So, whichever you want to do, just let me know. I'll put it into, you know, into it, and I just don't want to confuse anybody anymore, because I understand one thing. Ninety-two percent of the time, since I've been doing this, there's been snow. Ninety-two percent. Last year was an anomaly. June fifteenth was unheard of. That's the first time in the twen... in the, I don't want to say on the year, something. But in the thirty-something years that I've been doing this, June fifteenth is the earliest date. People are starting to think that that was the norm. It's not the norm. The norm is June twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-fourth, twenty-sixth. That's when you get out. And let me tell you something. This year, the chances of getting snow is ninety-two percent. One, two, or three days. So even if you roll these back, I'm going to tell you, I'm a betting guy. I like Atlantic City, I like Las Vegas. Ninety-two percent of the time, it is snow. All right, I'm just telling you, maybe if we rolled the dice, then it doesn't snow.
Mr. Yun, what do you think? Would you rather go to school during spring break, or in June?
It's all up to you, let us know. No pressure.
Make a quick decision.
Do you understand the discussion, having tried to make up three days?
What's the reason?
Should we add them on to June? And have termination day of June?
I understand where Mr. Pinto's coming with the AP exams, because like, for most of the juniors and seniors, they're going to take AP exams, but...
Tony, could you use the mic, please?
Oh, sorry. I think I understand Mr. Pinto's point, where she's, well, she's concerned on students with the AP exams, but I think, like, two or three days, like, I don't think it might, might not make that much of a difference on AP exams, so.
Mr. Seig, what do you think?
That was really good. You got out of it, that was really good, I got to remember.
And you dumped this early in my life.
Really good, I'm going to tell you, I can't get away that easy, but I got to remember how to do that.
Study more.
He's preparing for pretty long.
Yeah, he's good.
Gave you an answer without giving you an answer.
When Dr. Alfano and I discussed this, I agreed with his logic, and like you said, being here for so long, I know that when you have those continuous spans of time, by the time you get to mid-March, everyone in the district and the Board of Education on down loses their mind. It's just too long a time period without a day off. Of course, never to super definitely.
I've already...
You said it. But from my perspective, I, it really doesn't make a difference to me personally, which I'm, um, I would almost say, I know there's a lot of people here tonight, I'm sure that they're here, at least some of them, for this issue. You might just want to, I know we'll have an opportunity to comment as well. You might just want to ask for a show of hands, and ask them how many people prefer spring break versus the end of the year.
I am concerned about the snow. If we have snowy winter, we don't have time in June. If we start off in June...
And you take it from spring break?
Either way.
Either way, it's going to come off the spring break, either way.
Right, so, it's just a matter of, we do it now or later.
Well, it's a preference of which, like, you know, I'm a betting guy, and I'm just telling you, ninety-two percent, it's going to snow.
Right, but with that logic, you feel so sure, wouldn't you hit the spring break first? And that's why, that's where I'm saying, if you're going to use the nine...
Well...
If I was a betting person, and I wanted to...
I personally, I personally, but I'm also, I personally, you're asking me as a teacher, if I were teaching, I want that break in, at the end of March.
But you're still going to get some of it.
No, but I want that week.
You want the whole...
I want that week.
Whole ten days.
I'm just saying, if I were teaching, I don't, first of all, we're losing, you know, the two days, one in January, one in February. It's a long haul. And I'm not saying, I love teaching, but, you know, Helen, you teach, everybody else here is involved. It's a long haul. And the kids, you know, I just don't, look, I'm okay, I said this to Kevin, I'm here, so it doesn't matter. You want to go earlier in June, God bless you. You want to go later in June, that's fine, I'm still here. It doesn't matter. But I'm just, you know, I made a decision, I threw it out there, you know...
I think we go with what Dr. Alfano said, strictly because, let me come back to the script. November thirteenth?
Yes.
Thirteenth, you're off Thursday and Friday, so you went, basically, what, six days?
Seven days total.
Seven, and another month, you're going to be off a whole week again, because it's Christmas.
Right.
So basically, you went five weeks and two months. And to go January, February, March, April, May, June, without being off, considerable amount of time.
So you suggested the end of June.
I just, whatever we have, here we go.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rashad?
Don't worry, we're going to change the schedule again.
The question would be, is, do you want to go to school in June, three days? Or do you want to go to Saturday in February? I mean, those are the kinds of things that you could trade off. It's just an option, I'm not advocating that. My kid's a long braver, I don't have a dog at the time. But, you know, what makes sense to me is that the spring break is something that people plan. They go on vacation, and we've heard that from parents. So, to the end of summer, I don't know how many people decide to go on vacation the day right after the day after school ends. So that was my thing.
Right, but on the flip side, if we have snow days, and then we cancel spring break, we'll be canceling it later for a vacation.
I could advocate either one.
So, it is, right.
That is a valid one.
So, like, so, by a show of hands, certainly, you know, when I open the level, you can come on. How many people out there would suggest adding on to June versus taking from the spring break? Just by showing hands.
So what's June, you say June then?
Add the days of June. Okay, guys, press on. Add the days of June versus take it from the spring break. Okay, I got two, three, four, five, six. Okay, how many, I guess the rest of you want to take it from the spring break?
Well, maybe some...
Well, no, ask that question, you're something I care.
Okay, well, how many want to take it from the spring break versus, okay? How many have no preference? Okay.
How many asleep?
So it seems the majority of them wants to, want to take it from the spring break.
Well, the other... Right, but with spring break being in March, we could still get snow after March, so that would really kill us.
Odds?
Odds, no. Halloween, two Halloweens in a row.
Well, you're right. Hurricanes, I can't, I'm not good with, I'm just telling you.
Whatever we do, guys, we owe it to the administration and to the folks to make a decision tonight, and what we're going to do. So what I'm hearing from the majority of the board is they're advocating pulling it from the spring break versus adding it to the end of June, and my mistake.
Right, well, that's what I say.
And there will be an opportunity for public comment before we vote on it.
Sure.
Mr. McEnam, if you remember what a phone conversation...
What was the point? What was the point?
The phone conversation during our hurricanes, Sandy here, I mentioned about Saturday classes, and your comment was...
I don't recall, but if it wasn't appropriate, don't mention it. I don't recall, I'm sorry, it was out of my mind on those days.
Now, you...
You can tell me afterwards.
No way in.
Okay, all right. Very good. All right, so let's press on. We talked about that, Dr., did you finish the agenda?
What are you doing with that?
So, yeah, so what is the recommendation?
Well, the majority of the board is...
We need to...
Well, yeah, we will, but for now.
Majority of the board right now, the discussion is they want to take it from the spring break. Just from a show of hands, I think I know what the public wants.
Mr. McEnam, if you're going to change the agenda, someone has to make a motion.
Well, we're not voting yet.
Okay, well, probably...
We don't vote on the agenda until after the public...
But normally, in the past, what the board has done is, in this section, someone's made the motion to change the agenda item at that point.
Okay, so anyone... Pending public comment, I will make a motion to amend the item to have the first three days of spring break utilized as the makeup days.
What days are those?
The first two days. You know, and Kevin, the reason why I said the first two days is because...
Well, let me make the motion, and if you want to amend it, you can amend it. So, so the motion is to amend the school calendar to include students and staff to report on January twenty-one, February eighteen, and March twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh.
You really can slaughter it.
Okay. With the current last day of school now as the original, June twenty.
Right, June twenty.
Right.
And then we need a second.
Can I, can I amend the first?
Is there a second? All right, we got a second, now you can amend it.
Well, she can make comments, but she...
She could...
She can amend it, but then we take the...
You can't make comments now, you have to do your vote. Will this be mine?
No, 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 there's a motion on the floor.
You have to get a second, then you go into your comments.
We have a second, right?
Then a second, so. Now, you had a first and a second, now you go back to the discussion.
Now, you had an amendment you wanted.
Okay, so, the reason why I was saying just that Monday and Tuesday of Easter week is because Passover starts that Tuesday night, and I thought that it was important to the Jewish, you know, to the Jewish families to have off that Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So that's why I suggested...
So you're advocating the add to the end of June.
Add in one day to the end of June. And I also want to add that, I was thinking this all along, and Phil has said it, that in March, the middle of March, or the beginning of March, we get hit with some snow days. We're obviously not going to take off, take days away Easter week at that point. So that's why we'd like to make that decision today.
And Mr. Seig, you made the motion, if you choose to accept that, to amend your motion, and Mr. Bauter agrees, then that becomes the amendment.
Well, you made an amendment, does anyone want to second that amendment?
Second. She can't amend your motion.
Yes, she can. Yes, she can.
I mean, you can, Kevin, but if you're willing to accept it, it makes it a law. And now you have to vote on two amendments.
She made an adjustment to your amendment, that you have to have her to make that motion, somebody second it, then that becomes...
But I'm saying...
Now you discuss the amendment.
So you want to amend, you want a second amendment to F. Three, without voting on the first amendment?
Correct, that's the way it's done.
So the second amendment now reads, the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth...
Just take one.
And...
And June twenty-first.
Three twenty-five, three twenty-six, and six twenty-one. So that was motion by...
Mrs. Trapp.
Sorry. Second by...
Uh, Mr. Rukuyu.
Mr. Rukuyu.
Correct, you did second, I like him.
Okay. I guess we go to the original amendment.
No, now you vote on the change.
Vote on the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth.
Correct.
So go on the twenty... Mr. Bauter?
Yes.
Mrs. McEnam?
No.
Mr. Rashad?
Mr. Rashad?
He said, he said no.
He said no.
Oh, he said no.
Oh, I didn't hear, I bet I don't. We're voting on changing it to...
Twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
And the twenty-first. Right, June twenty-first. Two days. So Mr. Rashad doesn't know?
Two, one, go.
Mr. Rozinski?
No.
Three. Mr. Seig?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinto?
Yes.
Mrs. Rukuyu?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp?
Yes.
There it is. And, Mr. McEnam?
No.
Five, four.
Five, four.
Okay.
Okay, so what do we have now?
Twenty-first, the end, June twenty-first, twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth are on.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, let's press on with this agenda. Are you done with your report, Mr. McEnam?
Not yet, uh, not yet, still, still plugging through.
You're at G, starting at G.
All right, G, go curricular. Uh, the variety show is going to be held on February twenty-second, cancellation of the magical show, the approval of a new club as listed.
Do we know when that was canceled? Because that looked voted on every year going forward.
I'm, I'm not sure why they did that, I don't know if they're changing the date because they just didn't have the chance to practice and everything, so I think they might push it in some later, or they might just not do it.
I know it's unfortunate, but that event has also struggled in attendance.
Tom is also out too. Mr. Gentile is also out too, so it was, it was tough to get hold of him. Um, transportation waivers, transportation routes is listed. Uh, four trips on page eighteen, and, uh, some other competitions, cheerleading competitions, the junior prom, the senior prom, and the eighth grade dinner dance. Um, I would like to, I don't normally do this, I'd just like to make a statement about Sandy, and, um, before I finish up my report, I just would like to be brief, and I, I would just love to say, first of all, the real hard truths, um, we are dealing with with Sandy is exactly what Ms. Zeichner had stated. Sadly, we have over a hundred and forty of our students who have been displaced and are receiving services from either the town and the district, which is unbelievable, it's unprecedented. This is one of the, the towns that got hit the hardest. I mean, talking a hundred and forty-seven of our staff members have begun the very difficult task of rebuilding either their own lives, their own residencies, or the residencies of loved ones. Uh, and I, and I think everybody needs to really know that. I mean, we're, we're talking about making up two days, but really, that's what it's all about. Um, however, this community, I very much found out, very similar to what I grew up in, when things get tough, the tough get going, and everyone pitches in. I was extremely impressed by every, how everybody came together. I want to commend, first of all, the town overall. Their fire, police, OEM, construction officials, EMT people, council members, mayor, everyone. I probably forgot somebody, but under the direction of Barryak, the OEM coordinator, he met, I would say, probably every day for the, for three weeks. In the beginning, twice a day, Mr. McEnam was there, I was there. I mean, it was very well organized, everyone came together, uh, got this very difficult situation, not only under control, but effectively put a detailed plan of action together from a clear vision to what was needed and how to go about putting the town back together. It was a monumental task, and let me tell you something. I was very impressed, and I was very proud to be part of that. And, uh, I apologize if, you know, I didn't send out more emails and more communications to the parents and the board. Um, you know, my plight was nothing compared to some of these people. But unfortunately, um, I just didn't have phone, I didn't have email, and I didn't have gas. And it's tough to get here when I'm fifty miles away, and trying to get gas in the beginning was about a four-hour adventure where people were beating each other up trying to get, you know, ten gallons of gas. I would also like to extend my personal thanks to those of you who were able to volunteer and await the storm and assist the residents of Saro. The hundreds, and I mean hundreds, of staff members who gave of their time. So many of you assisted the shelter, helped relocate it when time arose, assisted the town in maintenance efforts and cleaning up following the storm, drove school buses to where they were needed, served food, et cetera. You proved that although the schools really weren't in session, the people who are at the very heart of our public schools, our staff, are also at the very heart of this community which supports them. The most amazing thing, though, of this entire ordeal for me, and this has been, I've been in this business for thirty-five years, I have never, ever experienced anything like this in my whole life. These two weeks were like none I've ever experienced before. But the ordeal is the resilience of the staff, the students, and the parents. How they have refocused on their studies, on school, and on each other's lives. And it's business as usual, as my friend said over there, in the schools, from the first day they came back. And I commend everyone, because if it wasn't for them, this really wouldn't be a reality. And that's one of the many reasons why it is an honor and a privilege to serve as your superintendent of schools here in Saro. Finally, I want to sincerely say how I am truly blessed, and I mean that, I'm truly blessed to be right here in my life, and I wouldn't change it for anything. I wish everyone a tremendous Thanksgiving, and we all have to sit back and say, you know, God willing, give thanks for the things that we have. So, I thank you, Mr. McEnam, for letting me say this, and good luck.
One second, one second. Um, so I'll conclude your report, sir.
That concludes my report.
Okay, before I open up the public, I just want to clarify so everybody understands. So the days that we will make up, that we will be in school are going to be January twenty-first, February eighteenth, March twenty-fifth, March twenty-sixth, and June twenty-first.
Correct, I'm on my own, you got it. And that's the last day for students is June twenty-first, which is a Friday.
With the assumption that we have no other days closed.
Well, let's hope for the best.
All right, at this time, I'd like to open for the public for any comments or questions pertaining to the, the agenda only. I will open up for the public again for any...
Lucy's in there.
For the board. Uh, Mrs. Bloom, how are you?
Good evening, Lucy Bloom, Shania Drive, former teacher. Uh, you know I hate the June thing, but just point of information for you, my little calendar book here says that Passover starts on Monday night. It says, first night of Passover, it says it in the little book. I don't know if our little book is wrong.
Lucy, let's not confuse the issue now.
Or if the little book is right.
We just finally got the truth back.
Just point of information, that's all, okay?
Anyone else? Oh, sir. Sir, please come up, state your name and, uh, address for the record, please.
Um... Please. My name is, uh, Tom Fritson, I live on Main Street. Um, I just have a couple of quick questions, and I know this is probably going to raise the whole thing. So basically, you voted on the days that we're making up?
We are not voting yet.
We have not voted yet until after the public...
Okay, I'm glad, thank you, that's a good question.
Yes, sir.
Oh, you were voting on a different...
Well, we were just making a recommendation, uh, we passed the motion to change the agenda, but based on public comment, then we'll vote.
Is, what is the reason that we have to make up? How many days are we missing? Three?
No, we, we actually had, um, seven days of school that we were not out. Um, we're making up two days, but normally the state requires school districts to meet for a hundred and eighty days. Uh, we always have a hundred and eighty-two days. That's just two extra days that you always have to, say. So we're taking that one eighty-two and backing it to one eighty, so that takes care of those few days.
So what is...
We have five. So we have five days, um, left that we need to make up.
So you need to make up five days?
Right.
Why?
Because the state requires us to do a hundred and eighty. By law.
By, by law?
Right.
Okay, so we're saying that now we're at a hundred and eighty days if we add these days in?
Yes, sir.
Unless, of course, something colossal happens between now and then.
Yes, sir.
And in the speech that was so well done by Mr. Alphano, this was an act of Mother Nature and God, something that we never expected to see. Don't you think that we can go to the state at any point in time after this is gone, maybe another couple of snowstorms, and say, hey, this year, we're just not going to make the hundred and eighty days?
Can I answer that question?
Well, you can, I actually mentioned that to the governor, if you're going to say it.
Go ahead. Um, we just came from a meeting on, I believe it was Friday, and there's no how, no way they're going to cut, roll back those hundred and eighty days in the Department of Education. And we even said, well, what happens if we get five days of snow? Because like I said, it's ninety-two percent that we're going to get some snow. We're doing one eighty. We're do, we're doing one eighty. And, and Mr. McEnam actually had a conversation with the governor when he was surveying, you know, down in the areas that were so far hit by this community. And, uh, they've never rolled it back. Like I said, I've been involved for about thirty-five years, and never once have they rolled back the hundred and eighty-day requirement.
Right, and then...
Whether it's an act of God or not, there were, there were days I remember, there were years that we had, we lost seven, eight days, and he wouldn't, nobody would roll them back. So it's really not our decision.
I can understand what you're saying, but I guess, um, this is something that has never, pretty much ever experienced.
This is unprecedented.
This is unprecedented. And you don't think that the government can't go to the government and say, this has been an unprecedented year, can you cut us? I mean, if we're going to miss by ten, fifteen days, then I see a problem. But if we're only going to miss by maybe two, three days, really?
I, I think if we have a lot of snow days, we would have to re-appeal, and I think...
Oh, well, obviously, you're going to re-appeal.
Right, the appeal process is the county superintendents that have meetings with the education commissioner. Um, that's where that has to happen. As far as the district is concerned, we're obligated statutorily to do a hundred and eighty days, where you can be penalized by state aid, all these other things that the state threatens. I, I'm with you on this one.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I think, hopefully, the state can be a little bit lenient on a year that is unprecedented across...
Well, look at the short term. I mean, they don't have schools to go to, and he's not even relaxing the appointment on that. And we did pretty well from a school different perspective.
So I think we should, like, as a, as a whole state petition the Board of Education, say you need to come up with something better.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public like to speak?
Dr. Alphano, if you ran out of days in June, since you have the June thirty requirement, what would happen? Do you have to go to Saturdays? Is that, that would be...
You can't go, you can't go past the general... Okay, so, uh, at this time, I'll close the public portion, and I'll take a motion.
Wait, there's a... I don't, I don't call it.
Please come up, state your name and address for the record.
That's Helen, that's Helen.
That's okay.
A little, got little legs.
Come on, pull, pull you down.
You can pull, yeah.
Just, just to throw it out there, Suzanne...
You state your name and address for the record, please.
Suzanne Green, seventy-one near drive, sorry, just moved. Um, just as, to throw it out there, is it possible to just keep the schedule the way it is and add five, six Saturdays? Which I know would aggravate everybody even more. But if everybody's so concerned about losing vacation, or adding days here, or adding this, adding that, can you just throw in like five Saturdays and keep the latest?
Your answer to that question is, yes, you can, but there's an appeal process, you need county superintendent approval to go to school on Saturdays. Then it affects other things. I know the last SAT session, I think, is over by now. But all those other things that happen on Saturdays that you may...
The reason why the county superintendent needs to approve and the, and the Department of Ed is you have to have a certain requirement on the amount of attendance. So, Saturday, probably your attendance is going to be down significantly. When I talk about student attendance...
Just because schools open late in June doesn't mean they're going to be here either.
Uh, but, but...
But like theoretically, when does, when does the marking period end in June? A week before the kids are even going to get out of school?
No, they, it goes, no, no. It ends the last, basically, the last day of school. You have final exams, teachers put them in. It's actually a few days before the end of the year, so the teachers can get their grades in.
But they do take exams up until the...
Almost the last day.
The day before the last day of school.
Yeah, especially in the high school and the middle school, they go right, they roll right to the last day of exams.
I didn't get that far yet, sorry. Didn't get that far yet. So, I mean, it was just a thought, like, everybody's so upset about vacations and missing that day, missing this day. Why can't we petition to throw Saturday in somewhere? You know? Just a thought.
All right, thank you. And also, the public like to speak. Seeing none, at this time, I'll close the public portion, I'll entertain a vote, um, on the superintendent's, uh, agenda. Again, I want to remind the board members that when you vote on this agenda, you will be voting for the new revised calendar, which I'm certain will be up on the web tomorrow. Right, Mrs. Zeichner, it will be up on the website tomorrow. Okay, uh, give your roll call vote to the second...
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent's report.
Yep, okay. Do you have a second? Okay, you got a motion and a second, I got a roll call vote.
Mr. Bauter?
Yes, sir. I have a question.
Mrs. Backen?
Uh, yes, it's up the calendar.
No, on F, you specifically have to vote no on F-three if you're not supporting it.
On what?
On F-three.
Which is the calendar.
To change the calendar. If you're not supporting it, you must state no, like, when you're reporting.
I know, F-three.
Oh, that, how about calendar, I got it.
I said no on F-three.
Mr. Rashad?
Yes, it's so noted, except for F-three, I believe that is, that'll be a no.
Mr. Rozinsky?
Uh, yes, everything except for no on F-three.
Mr. Siren?
Uh, yes, with the extension on the one bill that I had mentioned earlier.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mrs. Rukuyi?
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp?
Yes.
Mr. McEnam?
Yes. All right, I, I understand that I go to no in the calendar for, but it's, it's a major decision, it's obvious the public wants to, it looks like change my vote to...
Just carry it.
I mean, I, I said it, no difference. Okay, um, having said that, delegate to the New Jersey School Board Association, very briefly.
Given the hour, unless anyone, there's no such a massive uprising off the spence with my report, would you something?
That was very brief, thank you.
Oh, wait, it was J.
Uh, and the committee reports on the discussion, I just want to add, Dr. Alphano well said. Um, there were some questions, I got a couple emails about why the, the school was closed that, that we didn't open up until the thirteenth. On Sunday evening of the storm, I got a call at about, uh, ten-thirty in the evening from the mayor to come down to the police headquarters. Um, that was during the hurricane, it was quite interesting getting there. Um, took me about a half hour to go, two miles, but I got there, and, and, and the issue was, they needed things from us. Um, school buses to evacuate people that were pulling out of homes, um, all different types of things they needed from the school district. So I started to attend the daily office of emergency manager meetings at nine o'clock every morning, and again at two P.M. in the afternoon. Um, like Dr. Alphano said, I was very proud to be the Board of Education president at this time, working with our leaders in town. Of course, what they requested us, obviously, the school district does not have the same resources as our town does, but everything we had, we gave them. Um, their first request was for buses to transport people out of the flooding homes to the senior center. Um, within about twenty minutes to thirty minutes of my phone call to Mr. DeAndry, we had buses on the road. Um, our custodians and maintenance staff the following day reported at the DPW garage, and they were cutting trees and doing all types of things that were accident from the town. Our cafeteria workers came in and started serving the food in the, uh, in the senior center, and then when the UES and Eisenhower got power first, they started preparing hot meals in the kitchen and transfer them over there. Um, it, it was just amazing what, what we did here. Every meeting day, we went and were getting updates on the power situation, and then on Thursday afternoon at the two o'clock meeting, the meeting started with, we have some bad news. And it was that the JCPL rep for Sable said that we're not going to get power back for ten to fourteen days or later. And this was Thursday. So, I immediately called Dr. Alphano, we conference to what do we want to do with our schools? Do you want to keep telling people on a day-by-day basis, there's no school? Or should you give people the opportunity that can get some electricity, get someone to go somewhere, including our staff as well as our families, and say, hey, we're going to open up school on the thirteenth since we know we're going to be closed for election day anyway and for Veterans Day? And at that time, we didn't even know if the NGA conference on the eighth and ninth was going to be canceled. So, it, it was, it made a lot of sense, and very prudent, I think, based on the information we had, um, to close the schools. But at the same time, we were planning on, what are we going to do if power comes back Monday, or power comes back Tuesday? Uh, we had all kinds of scenarios set up. How many schools do we actually need open to have schools? We know we needed the middle school and the high school, those were crucial. If we had two or three elementary schools, we could start moving, start doing a split schedule. We had all these plans and motions in case these things happened. As we know, power came up intermittently on Tuesday, which was election day. Talked to Dr. Alpano, um, and talked with the OEM individuals, and it bothered, we had power in the schools, but we still had trees down on the sidewalks, we had electrical wires down still, some of our bus stops were not accessible. So, all these problems were still there, to be declared before schools opened up. On Wednesday, we decided, hey, that problem's taken care of, is there a feasibility to open up school on Thursday? The other issue was, how many staff can we get a hold of? Uh, we had told the staff that we were not gonna open up to Tuesday, so if somebody tells me that, I'm gonna go somewhere, right? We have a want for electricity. So, we did a, a telephone list, and we found that there was a number of staff we couldn't get a hold of. We had staff that lost property, we had staff that had family members. So, it was very wise for us, I think, to go thirteen. And, and then when we're making that decision, we get the flash weather report, and we have a nor'easter coming. So, we said, what's the sense of opening up on Thursday? As we found out, the districts that did open up on Thursday closed down because of the snow. So, in hindsight, the decision that we made, um, was the right one, and I just felt that I, I needed to explain that based on the information that we were getting. Um, I wanna congratulate, you know, at least mention the administration, uh, the diligent effort to work with the shelter director to find displaced children, where they are, and we can transport them, set up bus schedules. Um, and I wanna give a special, uh, shout-out to, um, Lisa Iker, our, our council president, and she's also a teacher at the upper elementary school. Uh, during the second day, right after the storm, she had a suggestion in, in this, in the OEM meeting, was that we should have some type of distribution center to start collecting things, so we can distribute it to needy people. And they said, run with that. The next day, it was up and running, and it turned into Cheesecake Road, started an OLV, and then it became more or less a multi-talent distribution thing. So, um, I, I just wanna acknowledge your leadership and initiative in making this happen. Um, as a Sable resident, I, I wish everybody could have been in those meetings, that consisted of the OEM director, the police chief, chief of police, um, the senior officers on the police department, the DPW, uh, all the, all the individuals in town to see the competence that we have running our town. And I think on Thursday, when we go around the table and people ask me what I'm thankful for, I always say, you know, I'm thankful, I'm American, American if I live here. You know, I'm also thankful that we have competent leadership in this town that is compassionate and capable. And it was, I was very impressed in what, how the meetings were run and how everything was done. And, and I, I just wish that everybody in Sable could see that. And I was very proud of our school district, and I, I called it and it kinda catch, catch on that this was Team Sable. And we did everything we needed to do to help the folks here. Um, and I'm glad to back to normal. I, I've been a, a, a couple of places around the world and some third world countries, and I've never seen what I saw on Webber Avenue, on William Street, when we talked with the governor, what happened in this town. So, um, if, if you were untouched by the storm, then be, be very, very thankful, because there's some people that, um, one day you have a house, the next day you don't. And, and I reflect upon myself, I said, how would I have handled that? What would I have done? I learned a lot from the storm. Um, my fellow board members talked about better communications. Um, I agree, that could have been done. But I also realized the power of something that I always criticized with social media, with Facebook, the information that could get out there, um, and keep people informed, I, I think was phenomenal. And it was, it saved a lot of people and got a lot of information out there, and that's something, that's, that's, that's very worthwhile. So, I just wanted to add that there, and, um, and just, I think we owe you an explanation on why, um, we had the schools closed, because some people had said, hey, get them open, but we just couldn't because of, of those situations. I just wanted to share that with you. I appreciate your patience listening to me.
Can I...
Yes. Yeah, oh, and also, um, Mr. DePinto, Mr. Trapp, and Mrs. Bruno Rukuyi, who I think lived at that distribution center.
Well, thank you.
They were there all the time.
I'm sorry, I have to give that to, to Beth and Helen, and many of the, the staff in the back, and, and many people from out this room, and many people, I, I thought I knew many, many people, and there were a lot of people that my ten, twenty, thirty hours I was there, they were always there. Every time I walked in, there was always some familiar faces. And I, I really do appreciate what, um, a lot of you guys have done, so thank you. And I'll go back.
Mrs. Rukuyi.
I'd like to thank the SEA especially, because every time I was down at that shelter, every ti- every day that I was at that distribution center, we had hundreds of SEA members working there, and students as well. I'd like to thank Marilyn for being there. Every time I picked up the text message, she, she answered immediately and anything, any help that I needed at all. I'd like to thank JK and our coaches especially, for reaching out to our students and getting them to flyer twenty thousand homes. They distributed, our, our students, our coaches, um, sent out like hand-delivered flyers to twenty thousand homes to make sure that everyone got information on Sunday morning or Saturday morning, I lost track of the days. And we truly appreciate, I truly appreciate, how everyone just jumped in and stepped up and did it. So, thank you to the SEA, to our coaches, to JK, and to our children who did that, our athletes.
Thank you. Um, is there another board discussion?
Two more.
Yes.
Uh, just two more quick comments. First of all, who can put on the agenda for the next meeting at the beginning? Unfortunately, I neglected to mention it. Um, we had a long-time principal pass away. If we can begin with a moment of silence at the next meeting for Rita Whitney. Um, and then the other item, uh, which I just wanted to bring up, you know, I thought the presentation that we started with in terms of the structure and the way it was done was probably a model that we wanna follow, i.e., the board wasn't relocated. We were able to sit here. Uh, the end result of that was a very productive discussion following that presentation, and I liked the way the screen was set up so that the public could see it, we could see it, and have handouts in front of us. So, I think the, the overall structure, I think we might have hit a win with in terms of, uh, how to, you know, present to the board.
I think Mr. Howden interviewed every board meeting, set up our screen.
I don't know if that was you or feedback from Dr. Alpano, but I, we were trying to, we were playing with this for a while, and I think this, this seems to work for any future presentation that we do.
Gentlemen, right there.
Oh, there we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Trapp.
Just one quick thing, we had legislators' day, and Mr. Syak, myself, Mr. Paragio showed up for that day. And, uh, I had two classes with, uh, college prep juniors. They brought up some issues that I want the board to understand and, and hear about. Number one was their, the main complaint was cafeteria. They're not happy with the food, they're not happy with the price of the food, uh, the food that is put on, on what they're allowed to buy. I watched, I sat here for a lunch period on the doorway right here, and three-quarters of the stuff on the trays goes into the garbage. That's number one on that. The second thing that they brought up, um, and really, I, I don't know how we're going to address that, they're not happy with our guidance department. Both classes I had had, had issues. Uh, again, their juniors are going to be seniors next year. And the third issue, which is, I, I really don't see any issue with it, was, um, they complained about our sports uniforms. You know, and I, I guess, they're older or making a lot of sc- I don't know. You know, that, that was the three main issues that the students had. And the other thing that I, 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 I'll tell you the truth, uh, they enjoy it. They, you know, we, we speak about our, how we are elected board members and our government, and I have to tell you, I even tricked a teacher. There's the question, who is the only person in the last forty years that has been President of the United States but wasn't elected either Vice President or President?
Ford, John Ford.
That's correct, nobody knows. The teacher didn't know it.
What was his...
Our history teacher.
No, it was class?
What was his, what was his... What was his, what was his, uh, his title? What, what, what was he? How did he get there?
Spiro Agnew, who resigned.
What, what, where did Ford, how did Ford get there?
He was speaker.
Speaker.
That's the next succession.
Succession.
And then Mr. Trapp, you can't rest.
Right there, Mr. Howden.
Thanks for the history lesson, Mr. Trapp. It's his time.
Mr. Mackinon, I just, on the food thing, I, I just wanna make a comment, Tom, it's not, not only here. My son, who used to have lunch in the school, has now chosen to have my mu- my, my mother, my wife, very lunchy.
I took a bite and slipped.
Yeah, almost. Uh, it, it seems to be a concern amongst the, the business administration, we're getting that feedback, uh, on a regular basis. The nutritional requirements right now are so stringent. You know, you have to have whole wheat grains, whole wheat bread, a lot more vegetables, so I just wanted to, it's not Sable. This seems to be a more of a bigger problem.
Those are my own house.
Did those requirements just get stronger this September?
Yes.
I got the same feedback
Yes.
from the students. I didn't get any food complaints last year.
Right, no.
And this year...
It's the new requirements of the thing, of how you have to serve it.
You, the lesson here is that after you do your thing, you probably shouldn't. How's the food?
I think the only problem I have is the sweet potato fries. It seems that, uh, sweet potato fries are served like every day, and like, nobody eats them. They're always there.
Make note of that.
I love sweet potato.
You know, one of the things that I, I mentioned to the students also about a brown, brown bag trick, but I was surprised at how many students have brought their own boxes of cereal in, and plates, and just bought milk.